Welcome to the Carroll County Board of Education Candidate Forum, presented by the Carroll County Student Government Association. This forum is being broadcasted live on Channel 21 and being streamed on the C E TV channel. It will be rebroadcast up until Election Day. It will also be available to watch on the C C P S YouTube channel. My name is Enya Slawinski. I'm the President of C C S G A and one of your moderators for the evening. Chloe Kang, the Student Representative on the Board of Education, will also be a moderator this evening. The four candidates for the Board of Education were invited, and I would like to thank Ms. Dupin, Ms. Jaskowski, Dr. Malvoe, and Ms. Zimmer for taking the time out of their busy schedules to attend. Finally, I would like to thank all of the students in public for attending tonight's forum.
On November 5th, voters of Carroll County will have to elect two out of the four candidates running to serve a four-year term on the Board of Education. C C S G A hopes this forum can provide an opportunity for the public to get to know the candidates before casting their ballot. Before we begin tonight's forum, we ask those in attendance to please remain silent and refrain from making comments regarding the candidates' positions on the topics. At this time, please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices.
We will now begin tonight's forum. Each candidate will be given three minutes to introduce themselves and give an opening statement. We will start with Ms. Dupin, then Ms. Jaskowski, Dr. Malvoe, and Ms. Zimmer.
Good evening. Thank you very much to the Carroll County Student Government Association for organizing this forum. In my 10-plus years advocating for strong public schools locally, it is always my favorite forum because students are the most important stakeholders and because they always do a terrific job. My name is Muri Lynn Dupin, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. Twenty years ago, my husband Patrick and I chose Mount Airy to raise our two children, primarily because of the excellent schools. My daughter and son are grown now, having attended C C P S from kindergarten all the way through their 12th grade graduations. That is very different than how I grew up. I was born in Wyoming, where my father was an All-American college football player. When a professional career did not materialize, he enlisted in the Navy. We moved often, which meant attending eight different schools from Scotland to San Diego. After landing in Virginia during high school, I graduated from the College of William and Mary with a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology, a subject dictated by my lifelong passion for wildlife conservation. I worked summers in college and then several years after at a small private petting zoo in roles ranging from cashier to general manager, with the bulk of that time as an environmental educator, doing assembly presentations with a monkey, snake, or parrot on the tropical rainforest one day and facilitating hands-on encounters for preschoolers with farm animals the next. I transitioned to marketing and membership management in scientific nonprofits and am now thrilled to be in a position that brings all of that experience together in my role as the Corporate Relations Officer at the National Aquarium. There were also many years when I was a stay-at-home mom. It was during one of those stretches that I became aware of budgetary and other challenges facing Carroll County public schools and threw myself into advocacy, speaking at Board of Ed meetings and Commissioner Budget Hearings, among many other activities, making the case over and over about how important it is to value and empower our wonderful educators in service to students. It was an incredible honor to receive the Friend of Education Award from the Carroll County Education Association last year and their endorsement in this election this year, along with that of the Carroll Association of School Employees. Also endorsed by C C E A and CASE is fellow candidate Dr. Amanda Jaskowski. She and I have teamed up, forming a joint campaign entity called The Slate for Student Success. While we have different backgrounds and skills, we share a vision for our schools and community that ensures every student in Carroll County has access to a high-quality public education. We strive to strengthen our schools through respectful, responsible leadership. I am excited about the opportunity tonight to share my ideas and qualifications. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to apologize by reading off my phone. I was literally dictating this today during my kid's fun run and didn't have a chance to print it off. So, thank you to the Carroll County Student Government Association, Enya, Chloe, the Student Representative on the Board, and the Community Media Center for helping host this event. I appreciate the work the students put into organizing it. Your involvement is both admirable and essential. Students like you are the future of our community, and you are key voices in shaping the policies and decisions that impact your education today. I'm Dr. Amanda Jaskowski, and I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe that the decisions we make as a community should put students first. Before becoming an occupational therapy professor and a mother of three, I worked for 10 years in student affairs, helping create a living and learning environment that was healthy and safe, where everyone could learn and get what they needed to be successful. I've spent my career and personal life advocating for inclusive, practical education that prepares students for the real world. Whether you're planning to go to college, learn a trade, or pursue another path, I want to make sure our schools provide the resources and support that you need to reach your goals. I also want to empower educators by giving them the support they need to help you thrive, and that's why I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Carroll County Education Association and the Carroll Association of School Employees, along with Muri Dupin. This includes addressing teacher burnout and ensuring that they have the resources to be innovative in the classroom. Another key focus for me is creating a sense of belonging for all students. I believe that every school should be a place where you feel safe, where you feel valued, and encouraged to be yourself. This stage of your lives is about trying on new ideas, developing supportive relationships, and figuring out your place in the world. Our job is to lift you up and give you the support that you need to grow and develop into whatever incredible future self your heart desires. I look forward to hearing your questions tonight, and I hope to continue the conversation with you both before and after the upcoming election.
First off, I want to thank you, the Carroll County Student Government Association, for giving this forum. Yes, hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Greg Malvoe. I'm a lifelong resident of Maryland, and I've been an educator for over 25 years. I hold a Ph.D. in Education and Administration. And throughout the course of my career, I've taught K-8th grade as a substitute teacher, high school students through dual enrollment, and college students for decades with a focus on literature and writing. I'm a proud father of a Carroll County middle school student. Being the parent of a child with special needs, I'm well-informed about the use of I E Ps and resources for students with learning disabilities. I'm also an administrator, the college-wide coordinator of study abroad, serving an institution over 60,000 students. I have experience managing program budgets and writing grants. I enjoy actively volunteering in our community. I'm a member of the P T O at the middle school for my son. I'm also deeply involved with Boy Scouts, the troop, in our local area. If elected, I plan to keep our schools number one in the state with academic safety and giving our students success in a trade, college, or entering the workforce right out of school. Why should we hire out electricians, plumbers, and construction workers from out of the county? We need to support our homegrown talent. There needs to be clear focus on traditional curriculum, math, reading, writing, as well as civics and American history. I will support a learning environment that makes students independent thinkers, and students should not be told what to think, but rather be taught how to think, free of political agendas and any bias. I believe in the phrase, "We can't raise the academic bar if they continually to lower discipline standard." I bring strong support to our teachers. From one educator to another, I understand the challenges that you face. The local values of Carroll County residents must be respected. Therefore, I support giving parents the opportunity to opt their kids out of lessons with controversial topics. Students excel most when parents are actively involved in their school activities. Therefore, I believe that parents should be consulted when it comes to academic, social, and medical decisions for their children. I cherish being a Carroll County community member. I have seen firsthand the decline of students and schools in other counties, and I'm here to protect Carroll County schools from these issues. We need to keep Carroll County Carroll County. In closing, I've been endorsed by vast majority of elected officials in our county, along with former Governor Robert Ehrlich. They have put their confidence in me, and I am truly excited to share with you today my priorities and values. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Zimmer, and I too would like to thank the Carroll County Student Government Association. When I went to Westminster High School, I participated in a program called Youth in Government through the Y M C A, and we were able to go down to Annapolis and have a mock legislation. That experience really shaped me deciding to get my degree in political science. So, I'm just really grateful for the two of you and for all the leadership in the S S, in the Carroll County Student Government Association, and thank you for hosting us this evening. For those of you who do not know me, first and foremost, I'm the mother of two students who go to Carroll County public schools. I'm a lifelong, fifth-generation Carroll County resident, and I grew up less than half a mile away from here on West Green Street. I'm a Certified Senior Advisor, and I own a small, thriving business. I have over 15 years of business experience and practices in ownership, and I've sharpened my skills in understanding how to set and manage budgets, meeting financial and regulatory obligations, managing strategic goals, and making tough decisions regarding the allocation of resources. I'm also a proud community member and have served on many local boards. I'm currently the President of the Senior Provider Information Network. I serve on the Committees for Bridging Lives, Taste the Carol, and the Partnership for a Healthier Carol. In recent years, I sat on the Executive Board for Habitat for Humanity of Carroll County and sat on the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau's Philanthropy Committee. In the last three years, since my oldest has started kindergarten, I have become very active in my children's school Cranberry Station, where I currently serve as the P T A President, and in Carroll County public schools in general, where I sit on the Curriculum Council. While helping in my children's school, I have had the opportunity to have an up-close and personal perspective of the tremendous accomplishments and challenges of our students and dedicated educators. I believe that with strong and wise leadership, coupled with a commitment for building partnerships and respecting community values, we can effectively address the challenges while encouraging and rewarding the accomplishments. I believe that our public schools should be laser-focused on academic achievement and not distracted by secondary issues. Such a commitment to academic excellence both provides students with the foundation they need in their future endeavors and produces prepared, effective, informed citizens and future leaders of our society. I look forward to exploring these ideas with you further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum. Tonight's questions were created by students of the Carroll County Public Schools, and Chloe and I will alternate reading. Each candidate will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond to a question, and your time will be kept on the monitor below me. Our first question is, "Please explain the experiences you have that qualify you to be a Board of Education member and what steps you have taken to gain an understanding of the complexities of Carroll County public schools and its students." We will start with Ms. Dupin, and then posing from... We'll start with each leg going to the left.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share that. I mentioned in the introduction my experience as a parent. Having parented two children through every single grade level at Carroll County, I am familiar with every step along the way and throughout their development. I ran previously in 2018, and when I did that, I visited every single school, sat down and talked, and interviewed every single principal. My 10 years of advocacy combined also means that I have a deep knowledge of the school system, the challenges it faces, the policies, past and present, that I'm not too sure too many people have had that same level of experience who are running this year or sometimes ever. My nonprofit career means that I have many different skills and qualities that put me in a position to be a good leader and a collaborative leader. I have experience working with board-level committees and boards themselves, budgeting, supervising staff, creative problem-solving. I had a whole list, and it's in my closing statement, so you'll get to hear it all later. But... So, it threw me a little bit off guard because that was going to be like the closing argument, "Why can you do this?" So, you'll get to hear more about that later. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for this question. So, I bring a wide range of skills and experiences. As you heard in my opening statement, I am a professor of occupational therapy, so I'm an educator at a public institution. But I'm also a clinician. So, in my job as an OT, I work to help support children and youth and their families to make sure that everybody can participate in the way they'd like to in the community, that they get the supports that they need to succeed, and also to help navigate all the various kind of challenging laws and procedures and services that are needed to support students with special needs. In addition to that, as I mentioned, I'm a mother of three. I'm very involved in my school community. I'm active on the P T A as both the Chair of the Advocacy Committee, as well as the Chair of the Employee Appreciation Committee, and my husband chairs the STEM Fair Committee. So, we are there quite frequently, as well as just day-to-day in the classroom volunteering. I'm the Graduate Program Director of the Occupational Therapy Program at Towson, and in this role, I have a lot of experience with curriculum development, with program assessment, so analyzing data to look for student outcomes. I'm also the representative from my college to the University Budget Committee, which means that I take a look at how publicly-funded education dollars are spent and make tough choices about how they align with the strategic plan. And I also have a lot of experience with accreditation processes, so thinking about how, again, we align some of our strategic programs with the actual efforts that are being made in the classroom.
Guess I'll have to apologize as well that pretty much my introduction said a lot of what my qualifications are, so if there's repetition, my apologies. So, I do feel like my Ph.D. in Education Administration, understanding curriculum, is essential and helpful. Again, I've taught in some capacity K-12 and have been through a lot of curriculum, particularly with writing and literature, but other curriculum as well, and certainly participate with dual enrollment through our college. Other experiences is that as an administrator, I think it's essential, and working with budgets and grants and being able to crunch numbers and think about how can we financially do things better and look at the whole budget and consider the whole budget. What can we do to assist those who need assistance? Proud father of my son, and having a son with special needs gives me, I think, a good understanding in terms of what's necessary for I E Ps and helping students in special education. I serve on the P T O. I am very active in the community. I think that I desire greatly to continue to try to raise test scores and student academics. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Seven years ago, I left a job in corporate America to open a small business. Talk about understanding how to make difficult decisions with money. Running a lean, mean, small business has given me tremendous insight on how to make budgetary decisions and how to spend each penny wisely. As I mentioned in my opening also, I'm very immersed in Carroll County and have served on many boards. But most recently, becoming involved in the last three years at Cranberry Station, as I mentioned in my intro, has given me tremendous insight. I'm at the school regularly, and I'm able to see our outstanding teachers and programs. But I'm also able to see how things in schools today are not how they used to be when I was in school. So, some of our challenges, right? And how we would be able to best address some of those challenges. My most proud role is that I too am a mom. I am a mom of two kids, and I think that as a parent, we absolutely should have a seat at the table as well. So, that is how I feel like I am prepared to take on this role. Thank you.
Student expression is currently at the forefront of discussions as we are affected by school system policies and procedures. As a board member, what do you think the role of a student is? And how will you ensure that student rights and voices are protected and heard?
Thank you for this question. It's obviously really important to you and to the community as well. I think one of the ways that I would do this is to advocate for voting rights for students. I think that student voices are essential to shaping policies that affect them, and giving those rights empowers the student body and fosters leadership skills. I served as the state representative to the... Excuse me, the representative to my state Board of Education in high school myself. Really enjoyed that opportunity to develop leadership skills and hear about policy kind of from the inside and also make connections with educators. I think there's a number of other counties and states that have successfully implemented some form of student voting rights. It doesn't necessarily have to be every type of vote. I think having some restrictions might be wise. But I think that empowering our best and brightest student leaders is likely to increase civic engagement over their lifetime. And we actually know that surveys show that students feel more valued and responsible when they are empowered with these types of rights. I think students should have a seat at the table and not just be seen in the room. And I want them to know that I am someone that will always advocate for them, but I also want to advocate with them and making sure that their voices are heard in talking about their identities and their interests and their needs so that we're doing, not just kind of imposing our own beliefs and values on students, but working with them to develop new ideas.
So, two hours before I came here, I was at my computer, and I was teaching my writing class for students. And once I leave here, I have a stack of papers to grade as well, and I feel like I'm well in tune, I hope so, with students and their needs. As a current instructor, I want to do all that I can to make sure that students' voices are heard in my classes and the way I approach these classes. Multiple perspectives, multiple works and research they can do, and come to my classes, come to the table during literature classes, and share what those things mean to them in a very safe environment. So, right off, I think that we need to have that for students. I think that traditional education is so important with math and reading, science, but also the arts. And so, we need to take care of that with students. It's one of those questions I probably have a lot to say but can't cover at all. Pathways to success, futures, success for students in terms of trades. I've mentioned right out of high school, having those jobs they need, just making sure they have the basis to excel and so forth. Student safety. Students will be successful, they'll do well, they'll thrive if there's safety. Peer mentors for students as soon as they come into the high school or the middle school. I'm a big believer in that, that an older student can help out with them. And just making sure we don't spend too much so students can be successful.
That's time. Thank you. I believe that students being heard and their voices being considered is crucial for fostering a responsive educational environment. I think that students should be sitting on all of the Board's committees and even am open to the idea or think that there should be a Student Advisory Council so that we can understand our students' concerns, ideas, and feedback directly with the Board. I've been so impressed with the students that I work with on the Curriculum Council. They have a wealth of knowledge and relevant perspective. I'll give you a quick example. We were given a presentation about artificial intelligence and the tools that can catch artificial intelligence at a Curriculum Council meeting. And I had a student who was telling us about an experience with her dual enrollment, and she was... Her professor actually told her that the paper showed that she had used 80% artificial intelligence, and that wasn't true, and she wasn't sure how to combat that. And that wasn't something that I had considered. What if these tools are giving false positives for A I and what that would mean for students and their confidence being accused of potentially cheating? So, that's just one example of how I think students need to be at the table and how important that your voice is and that it's important for us as potential Board members to listen.
Thank you very much. This is such a great question. So, obviously, this can go so many places because you say, "What is the role and how do you make sure that your rights and voices are heard?" So, just starting a little bit with the rights and voices, Dr. Jaskowski mentioned student voting rights, and I'm the student member of the Board having some rights on the Board. And I am in favor of that as well. I think it's important. I reject the idea that a high school student who has managed to be elected by their peers to be a student member of the Board and has the level of academic success and leadership qualities to have that, that they're too young to be able to be a good member and serve effectively. I think some other things related to the rights and voices is for the school system to fold in even more how to get student feedback. Ms. Zimmer mentioned possibly an advisory council, and I would absolutely be in favor of something like that as well. At a recent board meeting this year, when the topic of new restrictions around personal devices came up, I gave public testimony because they were talking about getting input from educators and parents, and I said, "You need to make sure you get the student voice on this too and hear from them." And it was quickly agreed that that was a smart thing to do. I don't have a lot of time to go into what is the role of a student, but it is to learn who you are and to how to navigate society and to learn all the things you need to learn and to hopefully come away with a love of learning and independence and an eye towards how you're going to be a good citizen, and there's so much.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, "Legislative mandates such as Blueprint have placed a financial strain on school system budgets. If elected, how will you work with the county and state government to prioritize funding instruction and facilities, along with supporting educational resources in order to improve student academic performance?"
For me, right? Okay. I'll work to make sure that we prioritize Blueprint requirements with available funding. I have a strong relationship with legislators to secure necessary funds for our teachers and students. I'd be a solid advocate for adding mental health professionals, and I will push for the development of adequate pre-kindergarten facilities to meet the needs of our families as well. Thank you.
So, I am, to be completely honest, I am a little bit concerned about Blueprint's implementation. It is going to be a very heavy lift over the next couple of years, being able to afford this unfunded mandate. So, as Dr. Malvoe mentioned, working closely with our county commissioners and our local delegation to seek relief from this mandate by relaxing the requirements or allowing for more time for implementation. If no relief is granted, then we are going to have to make some serious changes and to really look hard at the budget and what changes we will have to make in order to implement this fully. So, I can't stress enough how this is going to be difficult in the coming years and that it's going to take all hands on deck so that Carroll County public schools can continue to have outstanding outcomes now that our funding is going to be restricted in the way that we're able to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the Blueprint is an underfunded mandate at this point. It's not an entirely unfunded mandate. And that is happening at the state level and also through funding formulas that are really putting a lot of restrictions on the LEAs or the different school districts themselves that have to implement it. And that is in addition to all of the other issues around lack of funding. That's one of the reasons I got involved over 10 years ago is because the school system was in a not-great place as far as funding. Thankfully, this year, the commissioners did approve a budget that allowed the school system to implement one of Blueprint's mandates, which was to increase educator salaries, at least certain educator salaries. And that was vitally important, and I don't think it would have happened without the state having mandated that. So, I think that we need to collaborate with other school systems and the state to get more flexibility where it can. For example, I would be in favor of a system where the local school system could put more of the county budget into ways that that school decides to implement things more individually, and some of the state funds would go more directly towards some of the things that the Blueprint itself is mandating. But there has been a lot of posture of combativeness with the state around Blueprint in general, and I would not be in favor of that. I would be in favor of much more active, creative collaboration.
Okay. As Muri mentioned, I think that the Blueprint does have a lot of potential for improving education, but there are some serious shortfalls right now to the way that it's currently written. The percentage of funds that must be spent in a very specific way, I think, is probably something that needs to be looked at and adjusted as much as possible so that local voices are considered and we can spend our dollars most efficiently. I think that fiscal responsibility is really key to maintaining high-quality schools without un... high-quality schools without unnecessary spending. And one of the things I've spoken about a lot in relation to this is thinking about better long-term planning. So, considering some investment at the start, like in turf fields or playground maintenance that would then, over the long term, save us a lot of money and help us to be a little bit smarter about how we're spending our dollars. I think that every education dollar has to go directly toward improving student outcomes. So, I would ensure that we would use resources efficiently and remain accountable to the taxpayers of Carroll County. I've worked with budgets throughout my career. I know how to prioritize spending on what matters. And I don't think we can afford to waste money on political distractions. Every dollar has to go toward improving student outcomes.
Thank you. Next question. Due to reoccurring violent events in schools across the country, Carroll County Public Schools has taken an active approach in strengthening school security by taking all the appropriate steps needed to abide with the Maryland Safe to Learn Act. In addition to the requirements of the Maryland Safe to Learn Act, what other actions, if any, would you take as a Board of Education member to keep our students safe? And how would you communicate these actions to the community, parents, teachers, and students?
Thank you for that question. As a mom, that is the most important question, is the school safety. I am very grateful for Sheriff Dewise's nationally-recognized Student Resource Officer Program. And I'm also, I stand behind Carroll County Public Schools' Security and Emergency Management Department. I am in favor of both programs potentially being expanded in the coming years. Having student resource officers in the schools is, I believe, the best way to curb threats from the outside. So, I think that that is extremely important. Another piece of the school safety has to do with the behaviors and bullying within the schools. And I do believe that there need to be much stiffer penalties for bullying. Unfortunately, the Carroll County Board of Education's hands are a little bit tied behind their backs because of state and federal mandates. So, I think we need to figure out creative ways to implement stiffer interventions for students who have repeat behavioral outbursts or bullying, who tend to bully more. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this. I agree that the Safe to Learn Act brought a lot of things that are very successful, particularly here in Carroll County with a very strong model SRO program, but it's not enough. And the escalating behavioral issues that are posing safety concerns are not just other students, but also endangering educators and staff. It really does need to be looked at. Now, this is also a reflection of a variety of things. We know that kids' exposure to screens predominantly all day from an early age has had an impact on their mental health and well-being, and there is a mental health crisis. So, the supports that we need to have to be able to provide interventions and to help families navigate supports they need is one of the things that needs to happen. But there also needs to be some clear, consistent, repeatedly communicated standards for classroom management, for empowering educators to set their standards, to have that, the support of their administration. And I think one of the things about implementing that is, I remember when my kids were in middle school, a lot of parents were invited to learn about this paradigm called love and logic, that interactions with your students to reinforce positive behaviors all come from love. And even discipline is an act of love, especially when there are meaningful, logical consequences. So, I think that the school system will need to do a lot to make sure that parents are engaged and partnering in this process because that's also where a lot of these come from. The parents also don't end up supporting the administrator or the educator in many circumstances.
Thank you. I'm very proud to be both a gun sense candidate and have the endorsement of the Everytown Action Fund, which recognizes my work to mentor students in violence leadership prevention, violence prevention leadership and mental health programming. I support comprehensive measures to protect students without turning schools into high-security zones. School safety, you know, every student and teacher and every educator and school employee deserves to feel safe in their school. I do believe in firm discipline policies that address disruptive behavior while working to prevent future incidents through early intervention and strong partnerships with parents. I would prioritize mental health supports and common sense safety protocols over measures that create a prison-like atmosphere in the schools. I don't think that's helpful for learning or feelings of safety and security. I think that arming teachers increases the risks of accidents and does not actually prevent school shootings, although, of course, we know that shootings are only one component of school safety and violence. Schools that do have comprehensive measures in place and anti-bullying programs have a lower incidence of school violence. And so, that is where I would focus my efforts. I agree with what Mrs. Dupin was talking about when she was saying that she would work closely with parents to address discipline issues early and also to give educators the tools and the training they need to maintain safe and orderly classrooms as well as partnering with parents.
That's time, thank you.
I would continue the county's approach with placing major restrictions on cellphone use. I think that's a great thing that's been implemented that continues, and I think will continue to reduce online bullying, intimidation, and orchestrated attacks. Second, I support policies that would indemnify and protect teachers from potential legal action in situations where they take reasonable actions to prevent injuries to themselves and students. I think also, as I mentioned before, peer mentoring is important. Older, more seasoned students coming and helping younger students to navigate through that tough terrain of the school. The result of peer mentoring could improve mental health for students and also create greater social bonds between these students. Learning apps as well. We may want to be careful what we download with our children's laptops, the kind of data mining that occurs with them. We need to look into that. These information such as a child's race, gender, orientation, economic status, and so forth, we need to look into that. SOOs, I agree, are good to have in the high schools. I think that should continue. And also, they're mentors for our students, and they show our students that police officers, the great things that they do. It's important. I would also say, let's actively engage in outside groups that may visit our schools and address school safety, address bullying. And I just hope as a community that we can all come together and just, again, continue to advocate for anti-bullying measures and assisting with the youth mental health concerns.
Thank you. Our next question is blueprint for Maryland's future requires increasing teacher salaries, implementation of a career ladder for teachers, enhanced teacher preparation, and job-embedded professional learning. How will you, as a Board of Education member, plan on increasing teacher administrator and staff retention while also focusing on diversifying the staff in Carroll County Public Schools?
So, I think we're back to me again. That is a really terrific question. And one of the things that I think that we have to do is, as Board of Education members, the first thing that we need to do is make sure that we are good employers of employees in the school system, which means valuing them, providing sufficient opportunities for professional development, meaningful professional development, trusting their expertise, and creating a climate where they do not feel under attack and second-guessed all of the time. So, that's one component of being, in terms of being able to recruit the best and retain the best, is being just straight-up a good employer and fostering a climate that's important there. I think that some other elements around that are that we have the Grow Your Own programs to be able to develop educators at McDaniel and at the Carroll Community College. I also think that we need to do more to help our education support professionals who are not covered under those salary increases but do incredibly important work. I signed on and agreed to the Education Support Professionals Bill of Rights, and I think that providing the bridges and pathways for them to be able to professionalize their careers as well is going to be very important. And then, we have a lot of teachers with those provincial certifications, and we need to work harder to bridge that and get them
That's time, thank you.
the training and mentorship they need to.
Okay. So, as you were reading the question, if you saw my face, I think my eyebrows went up because I have four full pages about my ideas about teacher support and retention, but I'm going to try to get through a number of them. I think to start with, I just want to acknowledge that teachers are really the backbone of their, backbone of our schools. I think we have to invest in their well-being. I think we have to provide them the support and resources they need to help our children succeed. And so, I believe in empowering the educators through professional development opportunities, higher compensation, and a supportive work environment, as Ms. Dupin was suggesting. Giving more planning time and non-instructional time is a component that's required by the blueprint that I certainly support because this would help reduce teacher burnout and give more time for some of that lesson planning and professional development and self-care. I also think that we should, in alignment with the blueprint, be prioritizing attracting and retaining really highly qualified, diverse educators, creating pathways for them for advancement and leadership within the school system. I think we need to reduce the burden of administrative paperwork. There's a lot of it these days, and it takes a lot of time away from direct student instruction. I think we need to support the mental health and well-being of our educators and increase classroom support. So, whether that's through additional education support professionals in the room or other ways that we can give direct student contact priority, as well as that additional planning time.
Manageable classroom sizes, I think, are helpful for teachers, making sure it's a manageable classroom size. If you've been there, you understand that adding just a couple of students can make a big difference in terms of your lesson planning and your grading and what you're trying to accomplish. I think ESPs and SSAs and others were forgotten with the blueprint, and we need to address that. It's not just the full-time teachers, but also full-time helpers and others who need to be considered. The good news is that Carroll County routinely has one of the lowest vacancy rates compared to other neighboring counties, and I think that speaks to our ability to retain teachers. We had just eight vacancies two years ago. It's been more. We had just over 20 this past year due to the good work of our current board. It could have been worse. The current board added 123 new positions with $11 million in new blueprint funding. Yet, neighboring counties have had hundreds of vacancies. All that despite lower salaries compared to our neighbors. We have the best benefits, highly engaged parents, and a great system that supports our educators. And so, we also have a fraction of the classroom management issues that other counties have as well. But we just need to support our teachers. We have to make sure, again, as I said, manageable classroom sizes. They did receive a raise recently, but let's not forget about our ESPs and others as well.
First and foremost, I think that Carroll County Public School teachers are the greatest strength of our system. So, I just want to throw that out there. They are our greatest strength. Recruitment and retention begins with competitive pay for teachers, and I am in favor of competitive pay and benefit packages that are commensurate with Carroll County's cost of living, including ample opportunities for merit-based pay increases while maintaining Carroll's tradition of fiscal responsibility and budgetary discipline. I think we can get a little bit outside of the box with some of the more difficult positions to fill. For example, enhancing, enhanced salary scales for difficult-to-fill high school STEM courses. I also believe that if we prioritize school and classroom safety, we will have a better chance at retaining our teachers. The behaviors that I see in some of our Carroll County Public Schools are sinking our teachers. They are have, it's so difficult to be able to maintain a classroom, let alone teach, when there's disruptive behavior that continues to happen and continues to happen. So, I think firm interventions with these students who have difficulties with behaviors and allowing teachers to actually get back to basics and teach their subject course. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, as the student population and community becomes more diverse, how do you plan on building a culture of respect, unity, and kindness through policies and initiatives to create a school system that is more inclusive and equitable?
Another big one. Well, I think I am very outspoken on this topic. I've written and spoken about it frequently. I think that, you know, I am very interested in making sure that Carroll County Public Schools is a place where everyone feels safe and accepted. I think that part of that starts with school board and committee members adhering to laws and policies like our anti-discrimination policies that protect students. I think that we need to be compliant in making sure that everything that we're doing within the school system meets ethical standards and also avoids costly litigation related to some of these issues. And, you know, I think that, again, having a commitment to diversity and inclusion helps create an environment where everyone has the opportunity to succeed. It's not about prioritizing one group or over the other. It's about, you know, a tide lifting all boats. And so, giving folks what they need, removing barriers, and giving them the supports to allow them all to meet our high expectations. I think that there's a lot of research that shows that policies like this do improve student engagement. They also improve student achievement, especially for underserved groups. And local data holds true to that as well. So, student outcomes are better when they are given the supports that they need, even if they are from underserved populations.
I feel that my personal journey has allowed me to understand diversity rather well. I'm the product of a historically black college and university from my graduate work. And I certainly have brought a lot of different minds and emerging people with academics in these groups. Even within the current framework where I work in my college, we are the second-most diverse college in all the country, representing over 160 nations. And so, we are the community's college, and we accept people throughout the whole community. And so, I understand the importance of acceptance and, you know, respecting people for who they are. So, at the same time, I bring this mentality forward and I merge it with the entire committee in terms of traditional values. Gives me understanding for championing inclusion through achievements. And what I expect is that for CCPS as well. Inclusion through achievements. We have to be careful not to assume things hamstring students according to what we feel they are on the surface, but we have to go deeper than that. And so, students who have, for example, disabilities, I think, again, we have to continue to look to them in assisting as necessary plans for them and all the different counselors and teachers who are trying to keep up with this in the paperwork, they need assistance.
That's time, thank you. Thank you for this question. I believe that all students deserve to feel welcome, safe, and respected in school. I think that kindness starts at home. And I think that our children are looking to us as the adults to model this kind of behavior. And things have gotten kind of mean out there, a little bit toxic. I think the four of us can agree. It's a little bit brutal out there. As a 38-year-old who feels pretty confident in who I am, there was a comment under one of the last forums that mentioned something about my teeth. And I immediately went on a vison line to get a quote. Like, "Sixteen stones can break your bones, but social media can really crush your spirit." And I think that as adults, we do need to be behaving better online so that we are modeling for our students to treat each other with more kindness and to stop being so critical and harsh to each other. So, I think the kindness is a very important piece that you brought up. As far as the inclusion, I do believe that there are certain categories of learners who do deserve a little bit of, they require extra support, including our free and reduced meal students, our multilingual students, as well as our special education students. And I believe that the local boards of education should determine how those supports are allocated. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an area where I think that our board can make some progress. Unfortunately, sometimes there are narratives where people make reference to the vast majority of people in Carroll County who want things a certain way and that people who have a minority belief are not as important somehow. And that is not what we need. We need board members that welcome and value every single voice and that every voice is actually heard. This comes out in referencing some home situations where there may be two moms or two dads as quote-unquote controversial and too controversial. And a simple book that references that kid, that some families have two moms or two dads is not allowed to be included in the curriculum, and that's just a very simple, basic fact and reality. and reality of life. And in order for students to achieve it, they need to see it. They need to see themselves in their schools and in their educators and in their community and in the policies that the school system adopts. A couple of years ago, basically during Pride Month, the board effectively banned pride flags from classrooms. And that was very crushing to many members of our community. And the conversations on some of these topics end up very toxic, and that really concerns me because I'm worried about the harm that is done to these communities. So I'm just going to be forthright and say that I think we have a lot of work to do, and electing people who are committed to that notion that it takes active effort is important.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next question is, as mental health concerns and other education needs have only been exacerbated due to many social factors, how do you plan on expanding and providing adequate mental health and academic resources for all students?
Okay. I better keep track of this, right? So in terms of mental health and supports, and bullying is part of that as well, again, I'm open to blueprint initiatives that will bring additional mental health professionals and support staff in school to help students. But we have to be careful that parents absolutely have the choice to approve or reject in advance medical treatment or therapy available to their child by the school. Also, to improve mental health for students and create a greater social bond, I would push, again, as I said, for peer mentoring. In addition to stem mental health issues, we need to watch for our overuse of technology in our classrooms. And we've done a good job, or that's been a good job, in terms of impeding the use of cellphone use. That's a big victory. And it allows students to, again, have more interpersonal interface and collaboration and just morale in their school. Parental involvement is so important. When parents are involved, again, and engaged in the child's education, it can lead to not only higher student achievement, but better social-emotional outcomes. I think SROs are good to have in our schools, and again, should continue to not only prevent bullying, but serve a mentorship role. And will help out with, again, the health of the school. Thank you.
Thank you for this question. I do believe that our students' mental health is an area of concern. I come from a family of mental health professionals. Both my mother and brother hold the highest tier of licensure in the state of Maryland for clinical social work. So I am supportive of more mental health professionals being in the schools, especially with this generation that is still coming out of being on lockdown essentially for two years and isolated from their peers. That being said, I believe that it is extremely important, paramount, that parents are involved in this process. I do not believe that students should be seeing mental health professionals without permission from their parent, from the parents, as well as parental involvement in that process. So parents, again, I always default to parents being involved. I'm also really grateful for one of Carroll County Public Schools programs, the Sources of Strength program, that identifies youth leaders that are then trained to be peer leaders and are supported by adult advisors. These leaders help cultivate safe learning environments by running both public health campaigns to increase wellness and decrease risk. So I love this idea of students being involved in finding the solution. Thank you.
This is something that's really important to me. I have, I have basically served as the de facto case manager for loved ones that have had mental health diagnoses and crises. One of the first things that we need to do is create a culture that de-stigmatizes these issues, for one. A lot of people talk about it. We all still use phrases like "that's so crazy" about something that somebody did that was really terrible, and that only adds to the stigma. So there's a lot that we can all do from that perspective to address this. And the mental health issues, we have the students we have to look at, we also have the educators, because the current state of education and the crises and the behavioral issues, that is another layer of what we need to do. And I would push for a review of other practices that we have, because we have a robust, strong strategic plan, but it doesn't really say all of that much about mental health issues and the mental health crisis and the intersection with the school system. Now unfortunately, what happens with schools is they have to try to figure out how to get around societal problems that kids bring in with them that exist outside the scope of the core competency of what a school system is supposed to do, and that only makes everything that much more complicated. And that's why working with external providers and subject matter experts, hiring more counselors, creating the capacity to bring in more people for whom that is their expertise, is something that is also going to be really important. So there's, it's a multi-layered approach, and it's not simple.
Thank you. Muri spoke about the mental health concerns in school employees, which is absolutely so important. But I agree with you that we are facing a student mental health crisis that we cannot afford to ignore. And I do agree with other candidates that I think that social media and cellphones have only made it worse. I think students are more anxious and isolated, and a lot of times more vulnerable to bullying than ever before. So it's important to create opportunities for students to engage with each other face-to-face, build relationships, have access to mental health supports in the school system and the community. Our counselors and school psychologists are overwhelmed, especially in elementary and middle schools currently. And I think that if we don't give students the support that they need, these issues are just going to compound over time. You know, programs that are proactive, mental health programs, have, I think, sometimes been the target of criticism by some groups. They claim that these promote specific ideologies, or they're a distraction from maybe traditional academics. But rigorous research shows consistently that these types of programs improve students' emotional well-being and academic performance and social skills. These programs have been shown to lead to an 11% increase in academic achievement, 27% improvement in social behavior, and are linked to reductions in anxiety, depression, and conduct problems, which do ultimately support academic outcomes.
Thank you. Our next question is, Carroll County Public Schools has been preparing students to be college, career, and life-ready. How will you ensure that our curriculum is modern, engaging, and relevant to prepare students to be successful in our evolving global society?
Thank you for that question. I think that it is important that we are preparing our students for, for their career and for college. So I think that it is, I'm very grateful for our career and tech center that is a crown jewel in Carroll County, and that we have, we're able to offer students the ability to prepare for both their career and their college. I am, I'm grateful for the fact that we have career counseling starting now in sixth grade that is far different than when I went to school, and we're able to meet kids at a younger age to start to understand what their interests are and what field they may be curious about or want to start learning about. I think that will certainly help them get going on the right path earlier. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much. I mentioned in the intro that I was an informal educator for many years in the area of environmental and wildlife education, and I'm a huge proponent of the idea that the more hands-on and engaging and fun learning is, the more effective that it will be. And Carroll County Public Schools does that very well already with outdoor school and the career and tech center. A dream of mine, which, you know, you can't necessarily make happen by yourself as one single board member, is that we would even expand things like that to, say, a nature preschool, especially as pre-K is something that comes in. And we, another county also has sort of a model farm that students get to do. And being in an agricultural county, it sort of feels like that's, that's, I guess probably it's not easy, but it's kind of a no-brainer that it should be a goal and something we could strive to. Those are big ideas, but I think that you can bring the notion of experiential education and things that, again, are sort of the career-ready part of things and understanding how to build aptitudes and take dreams and turn them into goals and turn those into plans. But some other things that I think that we need to do to make sure is we do need to increase rigor in our, in our instruction. I don't think we have enough rigor in our instruction. And I think that some of the things that have been happening lately with restricting materials in our libraries, it's also something that is anti-literacy, it's anti-robust exploration and interest in learning. So I think that doing a reset on some of those things that I think are hindering student success is also important.
I think that a focus on core academics like math, reading, and writing is really important. But I've spoken frequently about my interest in also providing students with practical, career-ready skills to prepare them for the workforce. And so my goal as both an occupational therapy practitioner and as an educator is to make sure that every student has the tools that they need to succeed, both academically and practically. So that could be if they choose to go to college, pursue a trade, or enter the workforce in a different way. I think that this involves thinking beyond those basics and including things like civic education, history, accurate history, focuses on personal responsibility, good citizenship. Because if we can teach students to be engaged, responsible citizens who understand and appreciate the freedoms and values of our country, I think that we can make them ultimately better contributors to society. I also think that preparing students for real-world success includes things like media literacy and not just focusing on maybe standardized outcomes. So critical thinking, problem-solving, social-emotional learning, these are all really important to helping develop well-rounded students. And so I would advocate, as Ms. Dupin suggested, for additional experiential learning, as well as individualized supports to the extent possible.
I believe in age-appropriate material. I think that's very important to have that and to make sure that our students can remain innocent. Also, I think that social-emotional learning was brought up. I think that that plays a role that's important. However, we need to make sure that we don't, the balance is there in terms of traditional education, and that we make sure that we focus on math and English and reading and science, civics, American history, and the arts, and that we don't shy away from that too much and not get into what can be potential social distractions and other issues. So I think we need to make sure we focus on traditional curriculum. And I think also, I agree, experiential learning is important. I think outdoor school is great. I think that the elementary schools and middle, well, the middle schools who do that, I think it's important. It carries the values of Carroll County in terms of outdoor school. Example also in terms of learning curriculum, and not just focused on the test, but curriculum itself. My son, who was a student over at Hampstead, they had a living wax museum, and they all created their figures, and they presented a famous person to not just members of the school, but families came in as well. So they learned about presentations and preparing for that. So there are many ways we can go about curriculum, but let's keep it, well, age-appropriate.
Thank you. Given the various issues students face, what do you believe the greatest challenge is? And how do you plan to address it while also incorporating student voice?
Well, that's a tough question. So the greatest challenges that students are facing. I think that some of the greatest challenges that students are facing, we've talked about, is the mental health crisis, the behavioral issues that, you know, affect other students in addition to the crises that some of the students that are demonstrating those behaviors are bringing in. And what was the second part of the question again?
How do you plan to address it while also incorporating student voice?
Also incorporating the student voice. So I mentioned earlier that I think that there's a lot more that we should do to formalize how the students have an input in how things are done, and that that would only make things that much better, especially as students become more young adults rather than just young children. I work in the nonprofit world, and we don't talk about shareholders because it's not for profit. We talk about stakeholders. And I think that running a school system is much more like running a nonprofit organization than it is like almost any other type of organization. It's not pure government, it's not, it's not pure business. And one of the things that you have to do is always have your handle on what are the stakeholders experiencing, what do they need, what are they not getting, and raising that voice. And a lot of discipline experts also talk about trying to provide age-appropriate choices as ways that children can have more control over their lives and over the things that happen to them. And so incorporating that from an early age throughout is also something that is, I think, really important and really valuable.
Okay, gosh. So, you know, I think truly that one of the biggest challenges that students are facing right now is the fact that their educators are feeling overwhelmed, that they're not sure how to handle the influx of new technologies like AI, as well as things like cellphones in the classroom and just general classroom management, and so that they can focus on the task of teaching. So I think that that's directly affecting student outcomes and learning. But in addition, I think that students are really affected by some of this divisive rhetoric that's happening in the school system. Students are also on social media and seeing their parents behaving poorly. I think they are sometimes made to feel left out, not included in the conversation, and also othered in many ways, as Ms. Dupin was speaking about, when certain types of family structures or beliefs are meant to seem like they are wrong or bad. So, you know, I think that there are some candidates here tonight that have aligned themselves with special interest groups that have sought to divide our community. I've made it clear that I'm here to serve every student and family, regardless of background and belief. And I am the candidate that can unify our schools, not divide them. This involves fighting against book bans, this involves, you know, working to counteract the opposition to inclusive education programs. And, you know, I think that my endorsements by the educators really show that their trust and support in my work.
Yeah, I have to call out that statement. The vast majority of Carroll County's, well, people who are in office are in support of who I am, not support of the slate. And I think that divisiveness will end when we can work with one another and we can work with those who are in place to make a difference, whether it's on the Board of Education, our legislators, mayors, and so forth. And so I look forward to working with those individuals who have been very supportive of my campaign. And I think that that's going to work well in terms of working with those who are like-minded in terms of Carroll County values. So in terms of the question, the greatest challenge, I think, for students is school violence and disruptions. And we know it because there were studies. We need to make sure that their policies, look, students want discipline, and they feel they need it, and they want to make sure that the classroom's not out of control. And we have issues. The last two years, there's been a 70% increase in physical altercations at the elementary school level. And at the same time, state's policies have that the second grade and younger cannot be removed from a class with disruption. We can't allow one student to hijack the class of 24 others. And I think maybe we ought to bring back the principal's office instead of a support room, so there's a little bit of teeth behind it.
Thank you for the question. I too believe that this, our students' ability to learn while behavioral outbursts are continuing to happen and disrupting the classroom is the biggest challenge facing students right now. Part of the question was how can we involve students and hear their voice? I go back to what I stated earlier about potentially having a student advisory council. I want to hear how this is affecting you and what you think would be good solutions or what students think that the interventions or discipline should look like for fellow students who are acting out or on a continuous basis of having behaviors? Because you have a unique perspective, and I really want to hear that. I too want to address a comment about divisiveness, just speaking for myself, and I think it's safe to speak for Dr. Malvoe, that our campaigns have been very positive and focused on what we can bring to the table. I think actions speak louder than words, and that it's unfortunate that other candidates have sent mail out smearing our name. And so, again, when it comes to divisiveness, I think Dr. Malvoe and I have been on the up and up and just explaining to the community what we can bring to the table without having to pull any other candidates down. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question and answer session of tonight's forum. Each candidate will now have two minutes to give a closing statement. We will start with Ms. Dupin, then Ms. Jaskowski, Dr. Malvoe, and Ms. Zimmer.
Thank you again to the CCSGA, to my fellow candidates, and to all in attendance. I am Yuri Lynn Dupin, and I hope you agree that I am uniquely qualified I am Mary Lynn Dupin, and I hope you agree that I am uniquely qualified to help lead our school system in a way that sets students up for success. This includes being a dedicated local public education advocate for over 10 years, fighting for the resources and support students, educators, and parents need. My upbringing in a military family means I experienced a wide range of learning environments personally and made friends with classmates from all walks of life. Having parented two students at every grade level, I have a deep knowledge of the system, policies, and personnel. I have visited every school and talked at length with dozens of classroom teachers and administrators to get their firsthand insights. My nonprofit career confers many applicable skills and qualities, staff supervision, budgeting, strategic planning, committee and board relations, dedication to mission-driven service, collaborative problem solving, plus creativity, enthusiasm, tenacity, and optimism. The focus of the board needs to return to academics. We must ensure that our schools remain excellent. This matters not only to CCPS families, but to people like myself who do not currently have kids in the system, because strong schools translate to safe, friendly, prosperous neighborhoods. We must cultivate a community where every voice is heard and valued instead of bowing constantly to the prevailing political structure here in the county. We should elect people who genuinely believe in the promise of public education, who center decisions around putting students first, who will partner with all parents, who deeply admire educators, and who can contribute to a climate that makes learning fun. I strive to model those traits, will work incredibly hard on behalf of every family, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you to the Carroll County Student Government Association and the Community Media Center for this evening's forum. Thank you also to our adult audience for attending and being engaged. I first became involved in school system leadership during high school, so I most want to commend you, the students, who dedicated your time to organizing this event and submitting thoughtful questions. This is an important conversation, and regardless of next month's election outcome, your voices here today help drive meaningful progress. I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe in the power of public education to transform lives and strengthen our community. As an occupational therapy professor, a mom of three, and a lifetime longtime advocate for students, I've seen the challenges schools face, but I've also seen their incredible potential to give every child the opportunities they deserve. Public schools are at the heart of our community. They're where you learn not just math and reading, but also how to think critically, work with others, and grow as engaged citizens. I want to be part of a school board that focuses on practical, real-world education, supports our educators, and ensures that every student feels safe and included. My role as a board member would not be to impose my beliefs, but to listen and represent all families in Carroll County. Whether you're concerned about what's being taught in class or how safe your school is, I'm committed to listening and advocating for every student. I believe our schools should bring us together, not divide us with political battles. My focus will always be on what's best for students and not partisan agendas. I'm proud to have the support of educators and parents who trust me to make sure that every student in Carroll County, athletes and marching band members, I was a member of both of those groups, students with disabilities, speakers of other languages, gifted and talented students, those who are neurodivergent, and students of all identities have the support they need to succeed. I hope that this evening I've earned your vote and that you know that I have your back.
As an educator and administrator and the father of a Carroll County Public School student, I would like to share my plan with you in terms of what I want to do with Carroll County schools. First, we must make certain that our schools are absolutely safe, secure, and drug-free. There are no compromises with me in ensuring the safety of Carroll County students, teachers, and support personnel. Second, we must make certain that parents are involved in the education of their children from start to finish. Parents have the absolute right to know exactly what their children are being taught. Third, we must focus on the basics of a good education for every child. That means that we provide every child a strong foundation in mathematics, science, language arts, and American history. Fourth, we must have discipline in our classrooms. This means eliminating distractions such as cell phones, having less tolerance for bad behavior, and ending any type of bullying in our school system. Fifth, we must keep social views, political views, and extreme policies out of our school system. Our goal is to provide our children with a strong, solid education without distraction. Six, we must always remember that the money that funds our schools comes from the taxpayer. We must be fiscally responsible with our monies and obtain maximum value for every dollar that we spend. You've heard my views and my plan on critical issues facing our school system. For additional information, please visit my website, gregmalvoe.org. And I am asking for your vote. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you again, the Carroll County Student Government Association. Thank you, Chloe and Enya and the entire leadership team. As I mentioned in my opening, I'm a fifth-generation Carroll County native. I live here. I opened my business and I work here. I play here. I volunteer here. And when I and I was excited for that when my children started school, that they would go to school here. I'm the ultimate stakeholder, and I love Carroll County. This is my home, my grandparents' home. I'm passionate about education, community, and public service. I ardently support Carroll County's traditional academic and community values as a staple for Carroll County's continued educational excellence. Keeping Carroll County among the best places in the nation to start and raise a family, to prepare for, and ultimately to pursue a career are my top priorities. I will always stand up for Carroll County. If my message resonates with you, I hope that you will vote Kristin Zimmer for Carroll County Board of Education. My name will be the very last name on the entire ballot, but I will always put Carroll County Public Schools first. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank you all for attending tonight's Board of Education Candidate Forum. Your insight on current topics will help the voters of Carroll County make their important decision on November 5th. On behalf of the Carroll County Student Government Association, I would like to thank Channel 21 for all the continuing support of the students of Carroll County. And I would like to thank all of you for coming and watching tonight's forum. Thank you and good evening.